Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Whitehall City Council meeting of Tuesday, April 1st, 2025. If you don't please stand from all the salutes, I'll apply the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Aug, would you please call roll?
Dixon.
Present.
Brown.
Present.
Elmore.
Present.
Morrison.
Present.
Heck. Smith.
Present.
Harkar.
Present.
President Potter.
Present.
President Potter, I'd like to make a motion to excuse the absent member.
I'll second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Ms. Harkar, to excuse the absent member. There's already discussion. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
Yes.
The absent member has been excused. Under approval minutes, we have three different sets of minutes this evening. First is the March 18th, 2025 Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes. Next is the March 24th, 2025 Agenda and Special Meeting Minutes. And finally, the March 25th, 2025 Agenda and Committee Meeting Minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the approval of the minutes.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Elmore, for the approval of the minutes. There's already discussion. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Dixon.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harkar.
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. At this time, we have a special presentation by Mayor Bivens, Diversity Month Proclamation. Mayor, if you would.
How's everyone doing this evening?
Doing well, thank you.
Good. I have a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. It reads, "Whereas the city of Whitehall is committed to fostering an inclusive and welcoming community that celebrates the richness of its diverse residents, recognizing that our differences in race, culture, ethnicity, gender identity, sexual orientation, religion, ability, and background makes us stronger. And whereas Diversity Month provides an opportunity to acknowledge and appreciate the invaluable contributions of all communities, including but not limited to African Americans, Indigenous, Latino, Asian American, and Pacific Islander, New American, LGBTQ+, and persons with disabilities who have shaped Whitehall's social, cultural, and economic landscape. And whereas the city of Whitehall recognizes that true progress is achieved when we honor, uplift, and support every resident, ensuring equitable access to opportunities, resources, and protections. And whereas Diversity Month, during Diversity Month, we encourage all residents, businesses, and organizations to engage in meaningful conversations, celebrate cultural heritage, and commit to fostering a more inclusive and equitable community for our future generations. Now therefore, I, Michael T. Bivens, Mayor of the city of Whitehall, and also on behalf of Mr. Canetto, say that we should love anyway, do celebrate, proclaim, April as Diversity Month in Whitehall, and call upon all residents to celebrate and reaffirm our dedication to inclusivity, respect, and unity, and witness whereof. I have set my hand upon to cause the seal of the city of Whitehall to be affixed this first day of April, 2025." Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll now move into our standing committee reports. Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management met last week. We have several pieces of legislation on the agenda this evening. Our minutes are on file. We will meet again next Tuesday at 6:30.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Harkar.
Yes, thank you, President Potter. Community and Elder Advocacy met last week. Our minutes are on file. We have two resolutions that are being read by title only this evening, and we will meet again next week sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Community Standards Enforcement, Chairperson Smith.
Thank you, President Potter. Community Standards Enforcement met last week. We have no legislation on the agenda this evening. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next week.
Very good. Economic Development, Chairperson Dixon.
Thank you, President Potter. Economic Development met last week. Our minutes are on file. We have three pieces of legislation on the agenda tonight, all of which are tabled, and we will meet in these chambers next week, next Tuesday, after 6:30.
Very good. Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Brown.
Thank you, President Potter. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we plan to meet again next Tuesday at 6:30.
Very good. That brings us to Public Safety, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety also met last week. We have no drafts or pending legislation tonight, and we will meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Very good. Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Heck is not with us this evening. Ms. Elmore, would you please take this?
Yes, I will. Parks and Recreation met last Tuesday. We have no legislation on the agenda. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. This brings us to our official reports. Mayor Bivens.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Everyone that's here this evening, welcome to springtime in Whitehall. It's just fantastic just to see the changes in colors and, you know, making you think that we're actually seeing cherry blossoms blooming all around, all around the city. But we had a great coffee and chat at House of Hope. I want to thank them publicly for hosting that. It was just a fantastic time with residents. We also are starting a thing, and I think you will see it on Facebook, which is kind of a soft launch, if you want to come out and, and volunteer to pick up trash. But we're, you know me, and my custom, we're going to actually make it a thing and title it Talking Trash with the Mayor, where if you want to come out and pick up trash throughout the city of Whitehall, we get an opportunity to work together, pick up trash together. But Director Rollins and myself went out, as well as a few others with our, of our street team, and picked up trash along Hamilton Road, and it was, it was, it was some work.
It was therapeutic, honestly.
No, that's what you call it. But I think my bag by itself was maybe 40 pounds, and we had about five or six people out there, so it is, it is definitely a good time. But it's an opportunity to talk to each other, get to, you know, get to talk about the city, get to talk about things and pick up trash, and that's just great. And then also, I just want to do just a, just a soft plug for our home reinvestment program, which will be starting up. Director Rollins, I won't take any of her thunder, but that is coming. And then, before I get to my final statement, to the residents of Maplewood, Collingwood, and Robinwood, look in your mail. We will be sending out letters to you. We are going to send out letters with dates for an invitation to do focus groups as it relates to your traffic along those three roads. The goal in that along, at least in the month of May, is to do these focus groups so that we can get direct information from you as residents along those streets, so that we can take that direct information and start formulating an actual action plan. So we'll start that as focus groups, and then we'll go from there. And then finally, State of the City. State of the City will be April the 10th, starting at 5:30. And as you know, my custom is if we're going to come together and gather together, it should be for a purpose. So the main purpose will be to actually get jobs for the citizens of Whitehall, your friends or family or any other person that wants to get a job. We have approximately 12 to 15 employers that are hiring, that are coming to the State of the City that will be hiring on that evening. So please, please, please either come, tell your friends, tell your family. It will be a worthy and actionable event, and then I'll, you know, run my mouth for a little bit, and we'll get out of here at a decent hour. But it should be a really good time, and it should be a very good time of purpose. And then we will have a special announcement at the end of who will be the headliner for the food truck festival. As you know, we're moving the food truck festival to John Bishop this year because we will be tearing up Yearling Road for a service project. So that is in the works, and that is it for me, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Very informative.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you have dates on the focus group, you said?
No, I do not.
Not yet, and that'll be in the literature that's sent out?
It will.
Okay, thank you.
City Attorney Nick Demus is not with us this evening, so that brings us to City Auditor Quinzel.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. You all should have received from the Auditor of State's office copy of our Ohio Public Employees Retirement System audit that was done. We had no findings. Everything was great, so we've got that one out of the way. And just so happens, I got a call yesterday from Julian and Groob, and they're ready to start the audit of 2024 as soon as I call them back. So we will be back in that mode again very soon. Also, the tax office will be open this Saturday for a half day. The hours are posted on the city's website, but we, this is the first of two Saturdays that we will be working. And other than that, I, oh, one other thing. Treasurer Alexander is under the weather, so sending him good vibes for a quick recovery. And other than that, I would appreciate favorable consideration on ordinances 24, 25, and 26, 2025.
Thank you. That brings us to Director Public Service, Rollins.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the mayor said, we are going to get kicking off those, we'll call them Traffic Calming Focus Groups, starting in the woods first, hoping that we can get some good information, implement some solutions, and spread that throughout the city as we go. Once we get dates, that'll go out in literature, and we'll send those dates out, and they'll be open to the residents of Maplewood and beyond. Also, we do have the litter picker-up, Trash Talking with the Mayor, starting tomorrow. That'll be at 12 o'clock at the library on Broad Street. That's the meeting place. Our service guys will be there with buckets and trash bags, so if you'd like to join them and walk down Broad Street picking up trash, please do. And finally, the home reinvestment program will kick off tomorrow. It will be live. That will be posted on our Facebook with a link to our website for the applications. Those will run until Friday, May 2nd, is the deadline for the applications to come in, and then we will hopefully award out two weeks following. So all of our information is on our website. My assistant Brittany is the one that's spearheading that, so she will be the contact if you have any questions. I think that's it. Everything else, oh, favorable consideration for ordinance 24, 2025, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Public Safety, Greg.
I have no official report, but just want everyone to know that our fire and police are doing a great job and continue to do so.
Thank you. It was pointed out by Mr. Quinzel. Mr. Alexander's not with us this evening, and as for the council office, there have been no official reports filed in the council office since our last meeting. Under petitions, petitions, and claims, we have two items. First is the agenda for the April 14th, 2025, BZBA meeting, and the other is the minutes for the March 10th, 2025, BZBA meeting. This brings us to our first poll public. I would invite anyone to please come forward, please sign the sign-in sheet, state your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak.
Hi, Holly Stein. So I'm not sure if everyone in the audience knows, but they will shortly, that there is currently an Ohio Supreme Court case that's been filed of a sitting at-large council member in the city of Whitehall against the Franklin County Board of Elections and myself. And the questions I have are going to be centered around that. So I'd like to know, did the city council, excuse me, I'm a little under the weather myself, did the city council approve the payments to pay for Matig and Colombo to represent both Lori Elmore and the city of Whitehall in this Ohio Supreme Court case, 2025, 369? Two, how many times have you ever protested a candidate's approved petition to run for a city council position? How many times have you ever taken a protest that was lost at the Franklin County Board of Elections and filed a Ohio Supreme Court case? My guess, the answer is never. And the important details is that this protest was brought to the Franklin County Board of Elections by a sitting at-large council person, not in their role as a council person, but in their role as a resident or elector. Why are the residents of the city of Whitehall having to pay the expenses for Matig and Colombo to represent a single-named protester who is also an elector? Why? You say that this was to uphold your charter. This is the same charter that says an emergency declaration is to be used for an ordinance or resolution that has an immediate impact on health or safety of the community. Do you know the percentage of ordinances and resolutions that have an emergency declaration added to them? It's approximately 75%. Almost three-quarters of all the legislation has that attached to the, as legislation comes before this legislative body, and you have to ask yourself why. Do you care equally about upholding the charter when it specifically gives the residents the right to a referendum? Or is it only when it's convenient for posturing against my campaign that was approved by the Franklin County Board of Elections? My last point is to let the community know that I've asked a law firm to represent me in this Ohio Supreme Court case, and the administration refused to grant the waiver for this partner who had no dealings with the city of Whitehall to be able to represent me. But that's okay. I still persist. I think you realize how important it is to have a legal defense of your choosing in a case of this importance at the Ohio Supreme Court, and, and in this case, asking for legal representation. Additionally, I have received a ruling from the Franklin County Board of Elections that as a current candidate, of which I am, I can raise campaign funds to include for my legal defense in this matter. So I am letting the public know that my candidacy is going forward. You can email me at steinforwhitehall@gmail.com for further details. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, did you sign in?
I did.
Great, thank you.
Yes, already.
If you just state your name and then...
Yeah, apologies. I did sign in. Hi, my name is Jena Lee. This is my first time speaking at a city council meeting, and I'm here today because I want to voice support for Resolution 10, 2025. I'm speaking out today for the first time because it's a scary moment for immigrants and people of color in this country, people like me. In the last few months, I've had a lot of nervous conversations with friends and neighbors where we ask each other, are you carrying your passport? Do you have the documents you need? You know, how can we be safer? The threat of mass deportation is terrifying, and even for those of us with documentation, interactions with police or other authorities are fraught with fear about being racially profiled and wrongfully detained. Resolution 10, 2025 ensures that Whitehall is a safer, more welcoming community for people like me. By not using local resources to participate in federal deportation programs, Whitehall will build community trust. You'll ensure that immigrants and people of color are not treated as second-class citizens, forced to carry extra documentation, or fear deportation during like a routine traffic stop. This resolution is part of a growing movement in cities across the country. In particular, and these cities have benefited from these types of resolutions. In particular, I wanted to share this statistic on immigrant sanctuary cities from the Center for American Progress. There are, on average, 35.5 fewer crimes committed per 10,000 people in sanctuary jurisdictions compared to non-sanuary jurisdictions. Despite what some may say about immigrants causing crime, it's simply not true. I also wanted to mention that Ohio is a homural state, as some of you may know, meaning that municipalities like Whitehall can self-govern the use of local police. Resolution 10, 2025 is a lawful way to protect the rights and well-being of immigrants in Whitehall, a group that makes up around 15% of the city's population. I want to thank Councilwoman Harkar for introducing this brave resolution. It's a resolution that fights for safety, well-being, and care in this community. It sets an example for other cities to follow and is a useful, lawful, and impactful way for Whitehall to protect its residents from the federal policies of mass deportation. I urge you all to please vote in favor of Resolution 10, 2025. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I am also signed in.
Thank you. If you just state your name and then...
Shayna, Shayna Solomon, and I am also here to speak both in favor of Resolution 10, 2025, and also the Resolution 11, 2025. I appreciated Mayor at the beginning just having a statement in support of diversity and this being a Diversity Month in, in Whitehall. I think in a lot of places, it's been really scary to see how diversity has become a toxic word for some people, and it's really comforting to be in a community at this moment where, where that is not how you're approaching it. And I think that relates to both of these resolutions, where a lot of the message that we're hearing is that it won't be safe to be a person who's different, in whatever way someone is different, whether it's because they're trans or because they've moved to this country. And, and bypassing also these two resolutions in support of people who are trans and also people who've migrated, it really makes, marks Whitehall as a place that's safer for so many communities. And it's a really hard time right now, especially, I've, I've done a lot of work in immigration, and I think something that's really important to remember as well when we're thinking about these resolutions is it's always been scary for people who might be facing deportations, and right at this moment, it's also people, no matter who it is, people regardless of what type of status they have, are fearful of deportations. We've seen green cards being revoked from, from people in central Ohio especially. We know there's a large Haitian community who are, many of them about to lose status, of an Iswalian community who many of them are about to lose status. And so those lines between who, who has what type of status are falling apart, and it shows that all, all immigrant communities, no matter what type of documentation they have, need the protection of this community and the commitment to not collaborate with the mass deportation agenda of the Trump administration. The Trump administration knows that they can't do their agenda without the support of local communities, and, and this community saying, we're going to act differently, we're going to protect and keep our community safe, both our trans community and the community of people who've migrated. That is so, so meaningful and powerful in this moment, and thank you to Councilwoman Amy for introducing this brave resolution, and I hope that you all will pass both of the resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, please sign in. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
If you just state your name and then...
My name's Stephanie Reynolds. I am an educator. I work for ETSS, which I know Ms. Harkar through. So I'm here, I'm also a member of the LGBTQ community, so I'm here to talk about resolutions 10, 2025, and 11, 2025. I don't have much to say. I'm not a very verbose person in general, but knowing the immigrant kids and families that I work with, it would just be devastating and heartbreaking for them to deal with the things that are happening at large in the country right now. So I came here when I heard that you guys were voting on something like this because I'm going to support it wherever I can. The second thing that I want to talk about is Resolution 11, 2025. There are already bills, I'm, I'm an educator in a high school, there are already bills that have been passed that have interfered with trans kids' abilities to exist in public spaces. And again, knowing that there is a resolution near, in a nearby city that's going to protect trans communities from further interference is something that I'm going to support. So I urge you to vote yes on both resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Diane Peters. I'm sounding like a broken record, aren't I? No. Good evening and greetings to all you guys. I'm Diane Peters, and I have a couple of things. The first thing, the last poll meeting we had, there was a gentleman who stood up here and criticized how our council looked, and so he mentioned Bexley's Council, or New Albany's Council, or Westerville's Council. So I went home and I looked at videos of their council meetings. Guess what? Few of them had on ties. One guy had on a sweater with no tie, and one guy had short sleeves on with no tie. And I looked at Bexley, New Albany, I couldn't find anything on Westerville. And then he made the comment about qualifications to be on council. So I went through and I looked at your qualifications, and I was truly impressed. We have a lawyer who was a city lawyer. We have people that have launched programs in other countries. We have people that are urban planners and involved in negotiations, and I thought, wow, we've got it going on here in our council. So I just wanted to say I'm proud of you all, and I hope the guy is listening some, he's not here today, so I hope he's listening to know that our, our council is first rate. And also, I wanted to see if anybody was watching Cory Booker today. Oh my goodness, he's making so many wonderful points. And that leads to my next point. I am also in support of Resolution 10, 2025, and 11, 2025, and thank you, Councilwoman Harkar, for bringing those up. It's important, and I'm going to end, I think they've given you enough facts, but I'm going to end with a poem. First, they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out, because I wasn't a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out, because I am not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out, because I'm not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me. And this quote was attributed to a German pastor and theologian. The quote is powerful because it's a reflection on the dangers of indifference and the importance of speaking out against injustice, even when it doesn't directly affect you. It is often used in context of the Holocaust and other instances of oppression. There are multiple versions of the quote, with some including different groups targeted by the Nazis, such as communists, Jehovah Witnesses, or people with mental or physical disabilities. And another note about the author, he was initially a Nazi supporter, but he later became a critic of the regime, and he was also a pastor. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Stephen Canetto, Whitehall resident. Thank you for that proclamation. Now, for me, it's an honor to be, and I'm proud to be, a citizen of Whitehall because of that perspective that you bring to the city, and the perspective that you, Councilwoman Harkar, have brought. I'm here to support Resolution 10, 25, 2025. An Irish proverb says, "We live within the shelter of each other." I grew up in a family that was pretty divisive. 1630, my mother's forbearers came to this country. In 1900, my father's parents came, Italian immigrants. And these wonderful WASPs and these Italian immigrants didn't get along, mostly because of the prejudice my white Anglo-Saxon Protestant family had towards these new citizens. Until they saw how that divisiveness was impacting the quality of all of our lives within this family, and that caused them to step back, look at themselves, reflect, and come together. They came together and built a strong family of very diverse opinions, very diverse backgrounds. Now, I look around this room, and I don't see anyone who predates the white migration to this country. anyone who predates the white migration to this country. Now, we've all come from immigrant families, and we're building a community that's strong because of our immigrants, like we had historically, with all the conflict, built a strong country based on immigrants. I'm here to simply say, I'm here in support of you, I'm here in support of each other, and by supporting each other, we build a stronger community. Thank you. Thank you for supporting Resolution 10, 2025.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to come forward, poll public? Seeing nothing? Ms. Aug, would you please call roll as to whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda, including any add-on legislation?
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Thank you. On the third reading, we have three items all that have been tabled. First is ordinance 9, 2025, has been tabled until 4:15, 2025. Next is ordinance 10, 2025, title only, also tabled until 4:15, 2025. And finally, ordinance 11, 2025, tabled until 4:15, which will also have a public hearing on that evening. Under second reading, we have several items listed. Resolution 10, 2025, which will be read by title only, is a resolution supporting the immigrant rights and protections in the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Second is Resolution 11, 2025, by title only again. This is a resolution proclaiming the City of Whitehall a safe haven for gender-affirming health care and declaring an emergency.
I do have a question on these two resolutions with Ms. Harcar.
Yes.
We received revisions of both of these. Is that the final?
We will have one more subcommittee meeting to make sure that there's no additional changes, but I think that'll be, I imagine this will be pretty much finalized. We'll have one more meeting to review it.
Before our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll report on that next week at committee.
Thank you.
Of course.
That's all right.
Thank you. On the first reading, we have ordinance 24, 2025, advancing $75,000 from previously unappropriate monies in the General Fund 101, the Fleet Reserve and Maintenance Fund 313, and appropriating $75,000 from the Fleet Reserve Maintenance Fund 313 to the Fleet Reserve and Maintenance Expense Account 313.000.054,000, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 24, 2025, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison, to introduce ordinance 24, 2025, after the suspension of all rules. Is there a discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison. Is there a discussion?
Yes, Mr. President Potter. If Ms. Rollins wouldn't mind just giving one more little explanation for this, because I know that some of the folks here weren't here during the agenda meeting. Please.
Sure. So, quick and brief, the company that we use to outfit the police department cruisers is no longer in business. Unfortunately, we had three cruisers on site to be prepared for upfitting and paid for the deposit of $75,000 to get those outfitted. This business went into bankruptcy. There are multiple other municipalities that are filing charges against this company. Luckily, we were able to get our cruisers back, but they did not have the upfitting that was necessary. We are anticipating receiving the $75,000 back through filing charges. We cannot guarantee it. So that is this legislation to advance the money in hopes that we will get it back after the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon. Ms. Aug, would you please call roll?
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Resolution 24, 2025 has been adopted. Ordinance 25, 2025, authorizing and approving a fund transfer in amount of $67,968.97 from unappropriate monies in the General Fund 101, the Debt Service Fund 401, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 25, 2025, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison, to introduce ordinance 25, 2025, after the suspension of all rules. Is there a discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Ordinance 2025 has been adopted. Our final piece of legislation this evening is ordinance 26, 2025, approving and making a fund transfer in the amount of $57,928.89 from unappropriate monies in the General Fund 101, the Debt Service Fund 401, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 26, 2025, and move for the suspension of all rules.
I'll second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Harcar, to introduce ordinance 26, 2025, after the suspension of all rules. Is there a discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move to adopt.
Oh, second, sorry.
No problem. Motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Harcar, for the adoption of ordinance 26, 2025. Is there a discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Ordinance 26, 2025 has been adopted. This does lead us to our second poll public, and once again, I'll invite anyone to come forward with the caveat that you cannot speak if you've already spoken about a specific subject. You can certainly talk about any other subject that you choose to. Okay, seeing no one, I will now move on to committee debate board. Yes, Amy, I'm looking at you.
I know, I failed since Counselor Heck is not here today. I hear there's a Talk Trash with the Mayor coming up very soon. I don't really have anything. Ms. Smith looks like she might want to say something.
I have a message. The WCCA Easter egg hunt will be Saturday, April 12, at 10:00 a.m. at the YMCA. Following that, there will be breakfast at the VFW. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Elmore.
April the 25th is the grand opening and dedication, Mayor Maggert, Arboretum and Meadows at 10:30. And also, there is reforming a youth sports advisory board. And if you're interested or passionate about sports, you can involve yourself and apply. And they have it on Facebook, so I'm sure you can go to the website. Also, there's job opportunities with Park and Recs, and you can also probably go to the website and apply there as well. That's all I have.
Anything else? All right, we'll move on to poll council. Mr. Dixon.
Thank you, President Potter. Thank you all for coming out on this spring day to hear us up here do our thing, as well as all those at home watching on Facebook and so forth. You know, I was driving down Hamilton Road the other day, and I saw a bunch of people out with yellow vests and buckets picking up trash, and I passed by the mayor. I saw them, I didn't beat, but I thought, is that the mayor picking up trash? And I thought, well, good for him. So I did indeed see that. Were they talking trash, though?
Yes.
We were playing a little scavenger hunt, seeing what we could find in the trash.
Lots of cigarettes, folks.
Yeah.
I want to say how interested and excited I am for these focus groups talking traffic in the woods. There's been a few things that I wanted to bring up, but other things came up, and we haven't done that yet. So I'm very much looking forward to that, and thank you for organizing that as well. You know, driving around Whitehall, I have to say, Whitehall is, I'm very impressed with the amount of blossoming trees that we have in this community. And of course, they're all coming out right now. It's just like, wow, I didn't realize we had so many. But they look beautiful, and good for Whitehall on that account. Thank you to Ms. Stein, Ms. Lee, Ms. Solomon, Ms. Reynolds, Ms. Peters, and Mr. Cannello for your wonderful words. Ms. Stein, the only thing that I will say about that is, in your discussion about emergency measures, you know that I've been a big, I don't know about proponent, but someone that brings that up and feels that they are overused here in Whitehall. And so, and I say that here from this day is that that's within the charter. And I myself have had some criticism about doing that, but the fact is, is all of the charter matters. And so, you know, that's one part of it. People deserve a right to referendum, if that's what they so choose to do. And we should honor that by not overusing or using too much, of course, of these emergency measures. So on that point, we certainly agree. And Ms. Peters, you came upon several things which I have spent a lifetime fighting for and that are part of my heart. And that is essentially it. I mean, I don't, when I talk about these things, I get emotional, so I try to tiptoe around them. But the fact is, is indeed, we are all one race, the human race. So I don't get upset. And so I appreciate your words tonight. And I believe that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, President Potter. Thank you to everybody who made it out this evening. Thank you to everyone who was watching. I would first like to say that I appreciate the mayor putting on the coffee conversation. I enjoyed making it out and seeing, you know, residents be able to bring up different concerns, be able to address you directly and have conversation. I know during it, you said that you had an open-door policy, but it's great to see people get together in the community and have these types of conversations. So I do appreciate that. I also appreciate the trash pickup and everyone who dedicates any amount of time to being able to do that, whether they're getting paid or not. I think, you know, keeping our city beautiful should be on everybody's mind, and we can all do our part. So I appreciate that as well. I am looking forward to the state of the city and the opportunities that will be there for residents to be able to possibly leave and employ. We know that a lot of our residents are struggling in different areas, and so being able to do what we can, by we, I mean you all, to offer ways to help people uplift themselves is honorable. So I appreciate that. It's interesting. So first of all, I'd just like to say thank you, Councilperson Harcar, for bringing up the two pieces of resolutions that we have so far. I appreciate some of the conversations that I've heard around the resolutions. I appreciate people who speak up for them, because I know that that is not always, you know, a safe-feeling thing to do. So, and it takes courage. So I do appreciate that. And I also appreciate people who, you know, bring up their questions, comments, and concerns in a way where they are looking to maybe be educated or learn more. I know that, you know, I had questions myself, and Councilperson Harcar was very gracious with her time, you know, helped educate me on things that I don't, you know, I don't know about, you know, oftentimes. So I do appreciate that. I think the better that we can have these types of conversations and other conversations as we move forward in the community is what's going to help us come together, you know. And the better, I've said this before, but the better we understand each other, the better we can love each other. So I do appreciate that. It's interesting when we talk about diversity. You know, even in nature, I learned at the Tree Commission Academy that, you know, diversity of species is vital. You can't just have, you know, one species, you know, because if something goes wrong, then, you know, that entire population is wiped out. There's no rigidity against, you know, problems that arise. So I would just like to say, I don't, so I've said this before as well, and I really, I'm struggling even bringing it up, because I think it's important for us up here to have the look of unity. I think that it's important for council to not attack each other and not, you know, look divided, because at the end of the day, no matter how we feel about different issues, we are all on the same team, in the case that we all want what's best for the community. I would just like to say, nevermind, I'm going to have this conversation separately, but I just want to make sure that people, it's easy to sit up here and say that we care about certain things, or that we are champions of whatever and have lived our lives trying to, you know, make sure that we're doing the right things. It's easy to say those things, and it sounds good to people who don't know any better. But I just want to make sure that we're holding people accountable, and that we're, our actions are speaking louder than our words. And so I would just like to end with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Elmore?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everybody for coming out today, and those that are listening on social media. I want to start off by thanking the mayor for the proclamation for the diversity, April Diversity Month, declaring Diversity Month. That's courageous, especially in light of everything that is happening around the United States. Piggybacking on harmful laws and rules that hurt people and that are harmful to people, that are divisive to people. And I'm so glad that you're taking a stand and you're standing up for diversity. Also, I would like to, I did sign up for the state of the city today, so I will be there. Thank you that the home reinvestment program is coming back. It is a much-needed program. So anybody that needs help or work on their house or on their property, this is a really good program to become a part of. Thank you for everybody that got up here to speak. It's, your voices are welcomed and your voices are heard. If we don't have voice, we don't have anything. So thank you so much for just being able to come up and speak. My hat goes off to Counselor Harcar. You are courageous. You are a superwoman, in my opinion. You are taking on a very big task, and I'm going to tell you, I'm standing with you on this one. And there are a lot of people that are standing with you as well. When we can't recognize that all of us have differences, that's the start of the issues that we start to, that we begin to have. Everybody is created differently, and that's what makes us beautiful human beings. I would like to address an issue that has, that has happened. Yes, there has been a Supreme Court file. I mentioned that a couple of weeks ago. And what we have here in Whitehall and all the other municipalities, and we have a charter. And the charter governs the city. And to have a blatant disregard, in my opinion, for the charter, the laws and rules that govern the city, somebody has to be courageous enough to make sure that this charter is what the charter is. It's been adopted, it's been something that has been proffered forward, changed a little bit since 1947. The reason why there has not been any legislation or anybody has challenged it, because we've not had this issue before. Ms. Stein has settled on Buckeye Lake Park and Recs since May of 2024. Our charter says two-year residency. So I challenge the residency of that, which anybody could have done that. A resident could have done that. Anybody on council could have done that. What I don't appreciate is the divisiveness of the comments that were stated with regards to how it was done. Like I said, anybody can do that. I respect the fact that anybody wants to run for office, you get the petition signed and you file. It just needs to fall within the confines of our charter. And if our charter is violated, then it's going to take somebody that's courageous enough to stand up and say, "In my opinion, it's violated." And the Board of Elections cannot interpret our charter. That is not their job. And there was confusion with regards to that ruling. So the next step is to appeal it and go somewhere else. And I'm sure anybody else will take their appeal rights seriously and do the very same thing. It is called the rights that you have. It is called the rights that you have as a citizen. So I believe that all of the charter matters, not just a part of the charter, as Counselor Dixon stated, all of the charter. That's even how you become a counselor on this dais. I appreciate everybody up here, what they've had to say thus far, and continue to appreciate everything that's happening in Whitehall, the changes. The change makes, change is hard, but it makes us better people. We may not like it, but in the end, I mean, we can't see down the road. We can only see the point that's there. But all these different lanes are going on, and you see the point. You get there when you get there, but there's a process to get there. So I just appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I am done with my comments. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Elmore. Mr. Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank everyone watching at home. Thank everyone for showing up out here. We appreciate you coming up and expressing your opinions. That's the way that helps everybody up here make their decision, is by hearing from the public. So appreciate all that you've said and done, and I am done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, President Potter. Thank you to those watching at home and those who came in person this evening. And thank you to those who came up and spoke. It sounded like it was many of your first time, and I know this can seem intimidating. I remember when I was intimidated, so I really appreciate that. I will also keep it pretty short. Thank you, Councilman Brown and Councilman Elmore, for your words. I don't know if I can say it much better than that, so I'll just leave it there. And I'm sure Councilman Harkar have wonderful things to say about issues much better than I can, so, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harkar?
Well, yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for the proclamation. I do appreciate your commitment to the diversity of the city, because I really do see this as our greatest strength. You know, I want to thank all of you that came up and spoke. It is not easy to get up in a group. I feel like I'm pretty used to public speaking, and sometimes I forget that other people are not used to doing that, especially if it was your first council meeting. Even just to come in and sit here and observe and see what's going on, so that maybe you feel better prepared if you do choose to speak at some points. Your presence here is really welcomed and appreciated. I'll just say, as far as the resolutions, everything that you said, I really appreciate you sharing your input, your stories. I think that does give a lot of depth to what we're trying to do. Sometimes that human story gets lost by rhetoric that we see, and so I think that's really helpful. I personally grew up in a town, a small town, and when I say small, I mean 900 people. There was a traffic light, I'm told, when I was a child, but they took it out because they realized it wasn't needed, there wasn't enough traffic. So that is where I grew up. I was not exposed to diverse ideas, diverse people, diverse backgrounds. And so when I had the opportunity to move to a larger city, I was always trying to meet people from other places and talk to them. And people would even ask me, like, "Why are you so interested in, like, my background?" Because I didn't get the opportunity to have that oftentimes growing up. So I am, I pretty much approach this as an open book. I want to learn from other people. There's a lot that I don't know, so by hearing people's stories, that helps us all learn, that helps us all grow. And I'm always a person that's open to questions if people come in with curiosity and not judgment. If you want to learn and you want to grow, I will be happy to have conversations with you. If you are here to try to shut down and be judgmental, be rude, or disrespectful to another person or group of people, maybe because you don't understand them, then that's really probably not the place that I'm going to meet with you at. We got to have an open conversation and be willing to learn and expand. And I just, I think we are much better for that. So I thank you all for coming and speaking tonight. You know, I have gotten some pushback on the resolutions, but I would say overwhelmingly, I've received a lot of support. So please continue to come to the council meetings. You are welcome back anytime, and you all have my emails. You can also reach out to me. So thank you, everyone, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Harkar. So I would also like to thank the mayor for the proclamation. I think it was perfect timing, spot on, and definitely needs to be recognized, appreciated, and embraced. So very meaningful. I'd too like to thank everyone who came out and spoke this evening. And as a couple of my colleagues have said, it's not always easy, especially the first time, but your voice is heard, and it's certainly appreciated. And then the other item, the trash talk, I cannot tell you how much I appreciate that. On the street I live on, it's a cross-through street from Maine to Livingston, and I get a lot of trash every week, and I've spent countless hours in the 47 years I've lived in my property, and I've had anything from cash to phones to loaded diapers. Those are not a treat to pick up, credit cards and other nefarious things. So I think litter control, litter pickup is something that's easy to do, a little time-consuming, can make a huge difference. It doesn't cost anything, but it does instill a lot of pride, I think. Unfortunately, it's not going to go away, so if we are the proactive ones, we can sort of control it, and so I think that's a great program, and I applaud everybody who gets involved. Other than that, having no additional business for this council, I'm going to mark us adjourned at 7:56.